Hello, this is the September 20th, 2018, meeting of the Northampton City Council. I'm Ryan O'Donnell, be presiding tonight. Let me note the audio and video recording of these proceedings. And we always begin with a period of public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to speak on any issue. We ask you only keep to three minutes. And it's your time to give your opinion to us, so we don't engage in a back-and-forth. So having said all that, is there anyone who wants to provide public comment? Come on. No? Okay. No weekend plans you want to share? Nothing? In that case, we will take a roll call for the purposes of convening.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LeBard.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
And Counselor Shara.
Here.
We're convened. Let me make a couple of announcements. The first announcement of a public hearing. It's a National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for North Main Street in Leeds. And this accordance with provisions of Section 22, Chapter 66 of General Laws. Public hearing will be held on October 4th, 2018, at 7:05 PM here in the City Council Chambers, 212 Main Street, North Hampton, on the petition to erect poles and wires upon, along, or under, or across one or more public ways. Related, well, similar one is National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Audubon Road. And this is the same thing I said for the other one, on the same date, October 4th, 2018, at 7:05, here in the council chambers. Same purpose. I have no updates. Are there any updates from members of the council? Or announcements of Counsel Dwight?
Just legislative matters has actually been rescheduled, so everyone knows that it will be next Monday. And one of the items also to be discussed in that meeting will be rescheduling the following meetings, because they all fall on holidays, the nature of signing up and putting meetings on Mondays. But Laura will post them in due course, and then as they come up, and just let folks know.
So it's not the 24th?
It is.
It is the 24th?
It is the 24th. I'm sorry, the 24th. Yeah, I skipped, I just erased an entire week. You're absolutely right. Thank you. Yes.
Any other announcements? Counselor.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but I just want to go back to the poll petition. There's a little bit of an incongruence in the addresses. It says 212 Main Street. Oh, no, 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 I'm so sorry. I was looking at North Main. So North Main Street in Leeds, I think, is inaccurate. I think it's either Florence, or it's Main Street in Leeds. So I just would like a clarification for the future on that.
Maybe we can...
If it's in Leeds, it's like Main Street.
North Main Street is Florence, I guess, right? Up until the...
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so, unless there's a section of it... David, you could say, don't you think? Is there a section of it down by the VA that could be still North Main? I don't think it is.
It says 21 North Main Street, Leeds. I'd like to have a poll for VA, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
So maybe that is still North Main? Okay.
Helps pinpoint where we're talking about, anyway, right?
Because it's North Hampton. We name streets five times before they leave town, so... But that one, North Main Street, I believe, extends right up...
Well, there used to be intersections, but we took them all out. They just changed names.
I think it stays North Main right up...
The Haydenville Road.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Haydenville Road, yes.
Okay.
Just below, just south of the intersection of Florence Street, it says.
What really threw me off is I was looking at Main Street of Council Chambers. So I thought that there was... So excuse me for that, but I'm glad we clarified.
No, that was important to clarify. Thank you. Anything else from the council? Counselor Ward.
Yes, tomorrow at 3 o'clock will be a community open house for the Conway School of Landscape Design, which you may know, after having been originated, founded in Conway, as you said, and then located in East Hampton for a while. Their permanent new home is up in Village Hill, in the old carriage house, which has been totally refurbished. And that is the new home of the Conway School of Landscape Design. So we're very happy to welcome to the city and to Ward 2. And the community open house is tomorrow at 3:00. And several weeks later, or a week later, there'll be an official blue ribbon cutting out. But community is welcome to see the new Conway School.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ward, four.
First, I want to, I think we've been remiss at our birthday commenting, but we missed Counselor Nash's birthday last month, I'm sorry. But I want to acknowledge Sam Hopper's birthday, which was yesterday. And moving on from that, this Sunday is the North Hampton Public Schools and School Local Carnival. It's from 12 to 4 at JFK. It will be amazing. There are carnival games, there are inflatable obstacle courses, there is a celebrity dunk tank where you get the chance to dunk our Democratic State Legislative nominees, Joe Comerford and Lindsay Sabadoza, as well as the superintendent, Dr. Provost. I am running the prize booth, so come visit me and get, I'll hook you up with unicorn slime snod and bouncy balls and all sorts of stuff. So that is this Sunday. If you need help with transportation, there is a free shuttle bus that will be available. It's stopping at all four North Hampton Elementary Schools, as well as Florence Heights and Meadowbrook Apartments. For more information, go to the face, the school local Facebook page. And also, they need more volunteers, so please sign up, support our public schools, come give an hour of your time, it's going to be really fun. If you know any children, bring them, adults, you come too. And then, my last announcement is next Tuesday, the 25th, at 6:30 here in Chambers, is a 25 percent design hearing for the King Street Corridor Improvements Project. That is for the section of King Street from Bright Street to Church Street. And that's being run by Mass DOT. And come, this is a section of King Street that needs some work, and a lot of people are interested in seeing some changes there. So please come, express your views to Mass DOT. And that is again Tuesday, 6:30 here. That's it.
Great. Anything else? That's real good. Okay, thank you. So updates from the mayor, or communications from the council? Okay. So we'll take care of the consent agenda, which contains the following items. I'll read them. If you want to remove them, let me know, and we'll do that. Contains the minutes of September 6th, 2018, appointments to various boards which have received positive recommendations from city services. So vote will be equivalent to the actual appointment. Those are John O'Masta of 165 West Farms Road, oop, excuse me, to the...
Agriculture.
Yeah, Agriculture, thank you very much. Agricultural Commission. As well as Earl Chip M. Parsons of 137 Mill Valley Road, to the Arts Council, Kevin Palmerlow of 63 Revelle Avenue, to the Central Business Architecture Committee, Joseph Blumenthal of 39 Chapel Street, the Disability Commission, Linda L. Kekos of 220 Rocky Hill Road, Florence, to North Hampton Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners, Emily Lauffer of 241 Jackson Street, North Hampton, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, David Bloomberg of 86 Vernon Street, North Hampton. Consent agenda also contains the following for referral to city services, to the Agricultural Commission, Richard Jaskey of 774 Bridge Road, to the Public Shade Tree Commission, Susan Loft House of 15 Stoddard Street, to the Energy and Sustainability Commission, Aiden Maynard of 12 Oats Avenue, to the Transportation and Parking Commission, Deb and Bruce of 46 Columbus Avenue. And that concludes the consent agenda. There's a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Aiden seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, any objections? So that is approved. Great. And we will, it looks like, immediately go into recess for the Committee on Finance.
Thank you. Laura, would you call our roll, please?
Sure. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LeBard.
Present.
And Counselor Shara.
Here.
Excellent. First item is approval of our minutes of September 6th. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any alterations or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, our first order tonight is authorizing the mayor to accept industrial park lot and allow its use for Damon Road reconstruction. This is 18.161. Order that whereas the North Hampton Redevelopment Authority, a quasi-independent authority of the city of North Hampton, initially acquired title to what became known as the North Hampton Industrial Park, and whereas, after selling lots and creating roads, the North Hampton Redevelopment Authority only retains title to a very small amount of the original industrial park, including a parcel at the southeast corner of Industrial Drive and Damon Road, Assessor's Map ID 18D197, and whereas some of this land is important for the planned reconstruction of Damon Road and the renovation installation of additional sidewalks on Damon Road at the northernly end of Industrial Drive, and whereas on September 12th, 2018, the North Hampton Redevelopment Authority voted to transfer this remaining land to the city of North Hampton, order that the mayor is authorized to accept a deed for the property and to grant such licenses, access agreements, or easements as necessary to allow the land to be used for the Damon Road construction project. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
And the mayor's here to talk about it. And Mr. Fiden's here to talk about it. Mr. Fiden's here to talk about it.
Thank you. So this is basically a housekeeping operation after 40 years. The Redevelopment Authority once owned the entire industrial park. They sold all the lots, they transferred, they accepted the streets which came to the city, and they're left with just a sliver of land. Some of you may remember, a few years ago, we came to you to have a portion of that land released, so we could put the traffic signal up at end of Industrial Drive. At this point, the reconstruction of Damon Road is going to include a sliver of land on the Damon Road side, and sidewalks on Industrial Park side, and the Redevelopment Authority, rather than just sort of coming before you every time they want a sliver of land, it makes sense just to transfer this to the city, and then the city controls it going forward.
And this is the piece where the sign is, right?
That's correct.
Where the Industrial Drive sign is.
That's correct.
Any questions for Director Fiden on this one? Counselor.
Yeah, so on the map, that's this right here?
Yeah, and I passed out, this thing I passed out today is probably easier to read.
And so it's...
It's a small triangle on the northeast corner. So it's next to the Dunkin' Donuts that's currently under construction. It's the parcel between Industrial Drive and that new Dunkin' Donuts.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it's hard to tell it's even a standalone parcel, except for the sign that says industrial park.
That's right.
Any other questions for Director Fiden? All right, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next, we have 18.162. This is an order authorizing waiver of right of first refusal and Conservation Commissional Acceptance of a Park Hill Road parcel. Order that whereas the city of North Hampton holds a Mass General law, Chapter 61A lien on 38.7 acres on Park Hill Road Extension, MAP ID 49, Lot 12, which provides the city with a right of first refusal to purchase the land if it is ever removed from Mass General law, Chapter 61A, and whereas, the city has secured an agreement for 13 acres of land along the Manhan Brook to be donated to the city as permanently protected greenway if the city waives our right of first refusal, consistent with land acquisition goals in the city's Open Space and Recreation Multi-Use Trail Plan, 2018 to '25, and whereas, the site is not appropriate for affordable housing or other city development, and the Agricultural Commission does not object to this transaction, therefore it be ordered, the City Council authorizes the mayor to waive the city's right of first refusal pursuant to the provisions of Mass General law, Chapter 61A contingent upon the proposed land donation, and further the City Council authorizes the Conservation Committees to purchase or otherwise acquire for conservation and pathfinding purposes, as provided in Mass General law, Chapter 40, subsection 8C, any fee, easement, or conservation restriction as defined in Mass General law, Chapter 49, subsection 31, or any other interest in the above land and any immediate adjoining land with such related restrictions and arrangements as the city determines are agreeable. Further, the City Council hereby accepts such conservation restrictions. Further, the Conservation Commission is authorized to grant conservation restrictions on any land so acquired. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Director Fiden, you're on again, I think.
So I passed out a survey on this property. So this is, so remember, there's actually sort of two Park Hill Roads. There's Park Hill Road that comes in from the east, and there's Park Hill Road Extension that comes in from the west. They don't connect, because the area in between is sort of old gravelly road that's hard to travel. This is land that's basically a long Park Hill Road extension. It will include two future building lots that are on the part of Park Hill Road, which is still travelable, includes land we would like to come to the city, which is along the Brook, such a nice conservation area, connects to other conservation, other old space, and then includes a field where the buyers of property hope to do a solar photovoltaic field, sort of about the same size as what the city did on the landfill. And so to do that, they have to take the land out of Chapter 61A. They haven't done this yet, so it hasn't kicked in our right of first refusal, but we've sort of negotiated with them, saying we'll waive our right to, right of first refusal, if you donate this property to us. They've been very agreeable and are happy to do that. And frankly, what they're paying for the land, I think it's more than we can afford to pay by anyway, so it's not a lot of options for us.
Counselor LeBard.
Yes. So when you're saying that this property is around down by Park Hill Road, you're talking about this property coming off of Glendale Road to the left, to the Park Hill Road Extension?
That's correct.
Coming down that extension to the left, there's a field there also. Is that the same owner of that other property that we're talking about?
Yeah, so that, this includes that field.
So are we also looking at that property to the left wing?
So...
Coming into Park Hill Road Extension to the left?
Yeah.
Okay, that same owner owns that property? And are we going to be buying that also, or just what you're talking about?
So the entire parcel from the last home on Park Hill Road Extension...
Last of the Benoit's.
To the first home on Park Hill, is all owned by the same person. We would be acquiring only the land that includes the Brook and about 100 feet from the Brook. So we would acquire that, the rest would remain in private hands, and they would move forward on solar PV and that. So the field would eventually become solar panels, assuming they get...
But what about the property coming into Park Hill Road Extension that is owned by the, still by the owners?
Yeah, so it's all included with this parcel.
Okay, because you just said you were interested in back of the Benoit's, where the Brook is, and in that area.
So we would acquire the land along the Brook, the new owner would acquire the rest of the property.
And what would go there?
So...
Is it suitable for building?
The right off the paved section of Park Hill Road Extension, it's suitable for two homes.
On the left.
On the left.
Okay.
Then there's our land, and then the field. We don't think it is suitable for building, and so we think solar voltaic is a good solution for doing it. Because the only way they could develop that would be to pave between Park Hill Road and Park Hill Road Extension, and that would create a lot of cut-through traffic, which wouldn't be desirable. So this is a nice use. It means we get taxes, it's not something that requires any services, and it reduces pressure for someone to pave that road.
And we're still having the people that are very interested in putting solar, correct?
That's correct.
Which possibly means that same thing like at Willard's property, with the solar firm that apparently so-called might be coming in there, that we might be able to work on a fee that the city would get? But that would be the same thing with that?
That's correct. That's correct.
So on the plan, parcel A and B are the proposed potential building lots.
Correct.
And parcel C is the Brook parcel that Conservation is getting.
Correct.
And parcel D is where the solar array is going.
All correct. Yes.
People playing game at home, that's what's going on. Any other questions for Director Fiden on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And it's okay, I'm not... Stay for counting.
What do you think?
Good night.
Good night.
Cool.
The next is 18.163, in order to appropriate funds for the community preservation. Order that the following amounts be appropriated or reserved from the fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Fund, estimated revenues of $1,491,000, $1,271,000, the FY19 local assessment estimate, and $220,000 estimated from the state match. And this is for fiscal '19 purposes. $164,000 from the FY19 estimated total to the Community Preservation Fund Open Space Reserve, $164,000 from the FY18 total estimated revenue from CPA, to the Community Preservation Fund Historic Preservation Reserve, $164,000 from the FY19 total estimated CPA reserve to the Community Preservation Affordable Housing Reserve, $65,000 from the FY19 total estimated CPA reserve to the Community Preservation Fund Administrative Account, and $934,000 from the FY18 total estimated CPA reserve to the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve Account. Also, the following amounts be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund Budgeted Reserve for FY18 Community Preservation Bonding Payments, $65,000 for principal and $12,150 for interest for the Bean Farm Bond, $95,000 for principal and $26,500 for interest Florence Fields Bond, $265,000 for principal and $18,550 for interest for Pulaski Park Bond 1, $65,000 for principal and $19,950 for interest for the Pulaski Park 2 Bond. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second? And you're back.
So these are, these are all the mandated pieces, so we have to put 10 percent aside each year for those three dedicated items, Open Space to Start Preservation and Housing. So we're doing that. I guess we don't legally have to put money aside for administration, but then we couldn't administer it, so each year we put money aside in administration, and then the rest goes in for future appropriations. And then, of course, we have to pay back the bonds that CPA and that you all authorize. So all required, you will see in December, the recommendations for how to spend this year's rounds, for where there's flexibility.
And again, these are just reserved for these purposes, you'd be back with specific projects later in the season, so we're just allocating this to reserve and awaiting the committee's recommendation for spending it.
That's correct. The applications will do, I think, this week, so that the committee will be valuing the next couple of months.
So we'll be back in the future. Counselor.
How long will it be on the Bean Farm Bond and so forth?
I don't know the answer to that. Look it up and get back.
Can you do that?
Sure.
And the same with the Florence Fields Bond?
Okay. We'll do them all.
Any other questions for Director Fiden? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Excellent. All right, the next is 18.164, in order to authorize pilot agreements with CED North Hampton Solar LLC. Whereas a solar electric generating facility has been proposed for privately-owned property on Burt's Pit Road by CED North Hampton Solar LLC, which property is shown as parcels 7901 and 8001 on Assessor's Map 35, and whereas developers require an accurate projection of prospective expenses with respect to the real estate and personal property that is taxable under the law, and whereas, given the difficulty in determining taxable value for a solar electric generating facility, it is in the city's interest to have an agreement whereby the city is assured of a fixed stream of tax income from the project, and where it is best interest of the city to develop and to enter into an agreement fixing the payments that will be made with respect to all taxable real and personal property incorporated within the project for the term of the agreement. Order that the mayor be authorized to negotiate and execute a pilot agreement pursuant to Mass General law, Section 59, Section 38, 8B, with CED North Hampton Solar for a 5.6 megawatt direct current facility on two parcels of land totaling 49.7 acres, located at Burt's Pit Road, Assessor Map 35, parcel 7901 and 8001. Such terms and conditions as the mayor deems advisable. Do we have a motion of finance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Questions for the mayor?
By way of background, this is the, the whole issue of solar fields and how they're treated in terms of property tax, as well as personal property tax for equipment, has been an area of dispute. And so the DOR recommends, has begun recommending, sort of a best practice, that people instead avail themselves of this chapter of Mass General law, which allows you to enter into a pilot agreement, which basically means you reach an agreement on what will be the tax revenue over, in this case, I believe it'll be a 20-year period. There've been attempts to estimate it, and there've been several cases that have gone to the appellate tax board. It's been quite contentious, so generally what happens, most of these new developments, people are negotiating a pilot. I think you alluded to the fact that there may be this other development that will probably do the same thing. So this basically, under Mass General law, gives, authorizes me to go ahead and do that. We're working with the Board of Assessors, are working with the attorney for the Board of Assessors, and, and we're hoping to get something, you know, an agreement worked out that will give them a, first of all, give us a, a revenue source that we believe is fair to the city, but it gives them a predictable revenue stream that they can build into their model for the whole project, so.
Counselor Dwight.
So normally, we would consider them taxable anyway, although as you seem to suggest, there's some ambiguity there.
They are, they're, it's a, it's a private company that's buying private land and...
A system on there, you're right.
They're putting a system on, and that's part of where the ambiguity has been, because it's an electric generating plant, and several communities have attempted to, you know, figure out, how do you, how do you tax that equipment? Does, you know, the equipment depreciates over time, and, and the underlying land, and so, and they've been, many communities have been challenged and taken to the appellate tax board, and, and in some cases have been overthrown or overruled. So it's a strange area of taxation, and maybe our resident former assessor can speak to it in terms of why it becomes tricky, but, so this is what many communities do. You know, East Hampton, you know, other communities around us do a, typically do a pilot. We actually did a pilot with the, with Amoresco as well, for the land rights to that, for that particular solar array, because even though it's on city land, it's still taxable property, that's personal property.
The norm, I mean, the, my, source of my confusion is normally pilots, of course, payment in lieu of taxes, that we, we basically try to negotiate with previously exempt...
Not in every case. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the commonly-held term, but there, a payment in lieu of taxes can literally be that for even a taxable entity.
So we actually have the authority and the power to literally exempt someone from standard property taxation?
In lieu of this agreement, yeah, that we, as an alternative. And this particular section of Mass General law is specifically for energy facilities like these. And so, and you know, and we do have other examples in the city. For example, we, a couple of years ago, negotiated a pilot with the Fairgrounds, which is tax-exempt generally, but they have taxable enterprises on the property. Things like the, you know, the Paradise City Arts Festival, where they're renting the buildings, or when they're renting the buildings for other functions. That's not part of their tax-exempt mission, and so we've had a long, there's been a long back and forth between the city and the Fairgrounds about that, and in fact, the Fairgrounds, at one point, decided to go to the appellate tax board, to let them settle the issue, and in lieu of that, decided, let's just sit down and work out an agreement as to how we would have that worked out. So it, it's not uncommon, but it's really a unique kind of niche thing relative to solar. Thank you.
Counselor Fiden.
So just to confirm, and then I have a question. This is a mandatory pilot, so in other words, it's not like they can opt out of paying the pilot.
Oh, no, there, there's going to be an agreement, and it's going to be spelled out over 20 years, and it's going to, you know, have very specific revenue projections. And that's part of it, too, is that there's a, you know, there's a risk in terms of, for them, in terms of what the generation is going to be over the full 20 years, and what the return is going to be, and what, you know, what the value of the equipment's going to be. So no, we will, I mean, that's the other good thing for the, from a community's perspective, is we get to lock in a certain amount of revenue that we know is going to...
The question, though, that I have is, so for who is this energy being generated? Is it for business? Is it for sale? Is it...
They're going to be selling it to the grid.
So how is this not actually a business venture and commercial?
It's totally a business venture.
Yes.
Yeah, it's 100 percent a business venture. Yeah, it's one hundred percent a business venture.
And so how is that not taxable? I'm just curious.
It is taxable. No, it is taxable, completely taxable, and we could, we could have, you know, the assessor's office go out and try to calculate what they believe the personal property value is of the solar array. They could also attempt to figure out what the, what the land value is, and we could send them a tax bill.
So the follow-up question I would have is if we're locked into a twenty-year pilot with them, and if in fact, assessment of what they're earning and what the taxable income in fact is, or the taxable value is, is actually higher than the pilot, can we at some point opt out of the pilot agreement and charge them essentially what the city is due?
No, no, I mean, that's part of the agreement, and we would try to typically, there'd be some escalation in it over time, and we would, you know, we would account for that. So, I mean, that's part of what we would be-
Escalation in the pilot?
Yeah, there, I mean, over time, in terms to, to try to account for that. So, I mean, part of what we're-
So we're not locked into the amount that the pilot is-
Yeah, we would be locked into an amount. We would be spelling out over the twenty-year life of the, and again, if you, if you Google this, you'll see that, you know, all across Massachusetts, this is how most of, most communities deal with this, is through a pilot. And that's sort of what the DOR has begun recommending, just because of the fact that it's a challenging field. I don't know if you want to-
Well, Counselor O'Donnell had a question, and I'll chime in a little bit.
Sure.
How long is the pilot for the Fairgrounds, again? Isn't it five years? Off the top of my head?
Um, no, it's actually-
Is it twenty?
Um, no, it's, it's actually, I think it's not even, I think it's a, it's a continuously, I'd have to go back and look. I'd have to go back and look, but that one has-
Certainly, no, nowhere near twenty. Obviously different apples and oranges.
Exactly, yeah.
All right. Counselor Bidwell.
I, I was also curious about how other communities have, have arrived at the formula within the pilot. And I guess both parties have incurred some risk. We, if, if, if in fact it turns out to be tremendously productive, then we may wind up getting less than we would otherwise have had. On the other hand, if they don't hit their targets, then, then they're the losers. But is, there's some, so it's not tied in any way to their annual revenue number?
It is tied in some ways to kilowatt that they generate, and there's usually the way that, if you look at most of these agreements, there's, they're guaranteeing us a certain percentage of that in terms of what it's based on, what the taxation's based on. So if you look at most of these agreements, so, so we're in the middle of that conversation with them right now and looking at different agreements, and they've proposed something, and we're crunching the numbers on it and are going to propose something, you know, back to them.
Okay.
So, but this is a, you know, and then some of the other variables are just the cost of the equipment, you know, because there's been rapid advancements in some of the, you know, technology. So some of the pilots from, you know, a few years ago are different from these. So we're trying to account for all of that.
Okay.
Counselor. Just Counselor Quine has a question, and then I'll-
Just a quick follow-up. Is this in some way, is the attempt to incentivize solar, or it's just an agreement because it's kind of this nebulous taxation here?
It's, I think it's becau, it's more because of gray area. No, it was nothing, it was not part of any, you know, it's, it's just, it's become sort of the common practice, basically, for, for these types of arrays. And again, you can, I don't know, you Google pilot municipalities in Massachusetts, and you'll, you can read them from Chickapi, you can read them from all across the state. It's a green field, East Hampton, other communities, it's sort of how we do it.
I mean, I haven't looked into it personally, but if, in this case, they own the real estate. So it would be real estate taxes because they own the land the arrays on, and they own the, and the array. But typically, if it's an income-producing thing, which it would be, you would value it by doing, doing an income analysis of the cash flow on it, and then coming up with a cap rate to determine what the value is. But in an industry like this, you've got to come up with a reliable cap rate based on this industry, and maybe that doesn't exist yet, and that might have been what they were saying at the, at the ATB was, you know, you're trying to do a cash flow on us to come up with a net operating income, but you don't have a good capitalization rate because there's not enough of these yet to determine what it is for this industry. So that may have been why people said, well, until that exists, we'll just do a pilot because we're vulnerable figuring out property tax by income because we don't have a reliable cap rate for this industry, so we'll just do pilots. And at some point, once the industry matures a little bit, and there's a reliable cap rate, project to project, that we can then do it that way. I think one of the problems would be that it's slightly political, the rate that's paid for this electricity, and it's really high right now. But let's say at some point, the state says, listen, you know, we're tired of paying top dollar for this electricity being subsidized by conceivably low and moderate income people paying more to subsidize the rate, so we want to drop the rate, then the whole value would change. So it, it could end up being in our advantage, you know. Counselor.
I mean, normally, what we do in circumstance with established businesses, of course, is just reassess as we go. In this case, we reassess the pilot after twenty years and then have to renegotiate another pilot, or do they get incorporated into, at that point, we suspect?
We would renegotiate, we would be renegotiating. And again, you know, and I got to actually, yeah, we would renegotiate, and I've got, I'm actually now starting to doubt whether it's ten or twenty now that I think about it. But, yeah, but yeah, that would be the plan. And I think it's basically, they've got a, they've got a sort of a build-out cost for when you're putting one of these things in, the construction, the, the costs, and they've got a model for how it's going to pay for, whether it's going to pay for itself.
Just from not having been directly involved in it, but I'd encourage ten, because if in fact it is-
Yeah.
-that you can't establish a cap rate on a business that's in its infancy, that it may be in ten years, you can get a good cap rate, you can value these things very accurately, and then it just falls back to being any other commercial property, and, and you can do it that way.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to look into it, but I, I haven't, but that would be what it sounds like. Counselor, I don't know.
Yeah, I would just say, I agree, it would be nice to look into the term, and it seems like the term should be in the order, just because it sort of substitutes for normal taxation, which, as Counselor Dwight, I think, suggests, if we were doing it the normal way, the city council should have a role in explicitly setting, you know, maybe not the, the terms of the agreement, but maybe the length. So I would be curious if you investigate what term you think-
What I could do is come back to you on second reading, and, and I'll try to even bring you a, a draft of what we're looking at with more detail on that. We're sort of in-
That'd be nice, yeah.
We're in the beginning of stages, but part of what this is, is authorizing me to be able to do it. I mean, typically, neither you nor I would be involved in this process because it would be the Board of Assessors. And the Board of Assessors would file a, send them a tax bill, they would file an abatement, we would likely reject the abatement, and then they would-
The ATB.
Appellate Tax Board. And what's happening a lot of places is where this is playing out, is that the appellate tax board has been ruling against municipalities.
But the other, the other, you know, since this is kind of a special decision for a particular parcel-
Yep.
Yeah, I think that, that would be appropriate. The only other comment I would make would be, it's based on some of the conversation I've heard, I think we're, have a tendency, I'm, I'm hearing, you know, how are we going to make this come out to our best interests? Are we going to profit or lose by this? When in fact, we don't really think about that in terms of taxing other property in that way. The question's whether it's a fair rate. And so I, let's not, let's not think of this as an investment we're making. It's really a question of how are we going to charge these people for the normal services as we charge others.
Counselor Quine, did you have another question?
Counselor O'Donnell touched on it.
Okay. Counselor Dwight.
I agree on all those points, and actually, the, the thing that concerns me, I mean, we also have another new industry that's untested, and, and that's the marijuana industry, of course, as well. Would we be seeing a trend in the state of Massachusetts because they really, literally, because they have this, you know, janky system that's designed to generate revenue as opposed to doing income taxes?
I wouldn't think so at all.
But I mean, are they going to, are we going to be considering pilots for every new industry that doesn't have a data set that we can refer to for the assessors?
I wouldn't, because in this case, they're going to be paying a sales tax, which is assessed by the state at a certain rate, so that the product, so they're basically going to be like any other retailer. And, and the only personal property that gets assessed will be the normal personal property for any, any business, cash registers and those, you know, computers and those kinds of things. And then there's the building itself, which we, you know, the values for the retail buildings are pretty much set, so. And again, I don't know if the-
That, that would be the difference, in that solar arrays are very specific for that industry, but a marijuana-growing facility is in a warehouse. Warehouses have value as warehouses, not specific to the industry. A retail outlet is in, in retail square footage, which you can value, because if it's not a marijuana retailer, it could be a-
Coffee shop.
It could be a coffee shop. So, you know, those, there isn't a problem with. What messes up, I think, solar is that it's a build-out unique to that industry that really has no other, no other party would have demand for it, so it's, it's value, it's almost what they call a value in use, which is specific to that industry, which requires a specific set of data that may not really totally exist yet.
Well, that's, I mean, yeah, I understand, repurposing would be challenging. One, the one thing is that solar wasn't invented a week ago. It's, it's been around a long time, and solar arrays. So I'm, I'm just, I have no problem with this arrangement, it's just that, it just me, this is a reflection of my frustration with the state and the Commonwealth and the way they decide how to conduct revenue systems, and at the same time, sort of make it up and say, go along, or leave communities to have to hash it out in unprecedented systems.
And, and I agree with you totally, they should take the lead on this, because, for instance, our utility infrastructure, the gas pipes that are personal property, the electrical lines, the state does the values for those and gives them to municipalities because it's beyond the scope of any municipality-
Right.
... to value the telephone company infrastructure, or the electric company, you know, they do that. They probably, at some point, when this becomes a big enough hairball for three-hundred-fifty-one cities and towns, will step in and say, so many, so many megawatts, so many value. They haven't done that yet. So the other thing, what I will do, I will go, because I sort of speak assessorese, I'm happy between this meeting and the next meeting to go talk to them and have them explain to me exactly why the appellate tax board is spitting these things out and how they've been valued, because I'm sure within their organization, they're tearing their hair out and talking to each other, I tried this, it didn't work, I tried that, it didn't work. I'll go talk them about that, and I can bring that back, which I haven't done yet, but-
That'd be helpful.
I'd be very interested in exactly what reality is in the minds of the appellate tax board, that they can't let-
Right.
... one of these models that's been proposed, probably by bigger communities than us, why they've been spitting it out and saying it's not good enough. So I'll ask them.
I would only add to what you said, that you may remember several years ago, the appellate tax board actually overthrew all, a bunch of communities' assessments of wires for utilities.
Right.
And we ended up getting-
Yeah.
-hosed on that deal.
Yeah.
So, so that was, so again, it's, I think it's, it's the, the electric utility piece of it, and it's just not like, it's unlike any other, you know, a retail building is a retail building is a retail building, it's just, it's such a unique thing.
Yeah.
So there's a certain, I mean, there is a risk, but, you know.
No, no, I, and I, I think to Counselor O'Donnell's point, it's, we're not talking about an investment scheme, we're talking about actually a revenue system and, and equitable assessment of that and taxation. This is one of many unique circumstances, which kills me, because unique isn't absolute, and this is certain, there are no absolutes towards this goal.
And the other, the other thing I would just say to keep in mind is that, you know, the nice thing about the project at the Willard Pit is that we're redeveloping a, you know, kind of a brownfield area, and it's, you know, going to generate a lot more taxes than it is currently, right now.
Yeah, solar arrays are more valuable than dirt.
Exactly. So, so it's going to be a net benefit to the city as well as just the renewable energy benefit.
All, all of that's all to the good.
As I said, my frustration is with the, the state's cobbled mechanism and putting the onus on communities to try and broker these things, which actually, in some level, puts in, at disadvantage. It's, it's because you are literally negotiating, you have to negotiate. We don't get to, I don't get to negotiate my, the taxes on my house.
Yes, you can. You can file an abatement.
I can. That's the extent of negotiation.
Then you, you-
The advantage goes to the city in that case.
Yeah.
In this case, not so much, though, but.
And I'd encourage you to go, because ATB is the ultimate people's court. You can stand on the table and make your case.
All right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll consider that.
But it, I'm very, I'm actually very intrigued with why the wise individuals on the appellate tax board, why those commissioners have been spitting out the different ways cities and towns have been trying to tax these things. So I'm very intrigued, and I'm, I'm looking forward to talking to them and being able to translate the gobbledygook next time we get together. So, but-
Counselor. Oh, Counselor.
I'm wondering where on the map this is, this property, because it says in the order, Map Thirty-Five, and I'm looking at Burt's Pit Road, and there-
Counselor, I think the Counselor next to you can tell you just where it is.
Yeah.
That's in the heart of Ward Six. That's the Willard-
It's the Willard gravel pit, where there's going to be a marijuana cultivation facility.
Oh, it's all of this.
And then there's, it's going to be the marijuana, solar, and then open space, conservation land.
What a combination.
From then after that.
That's the other.
We'll give just Counselor, uh-
We're having a very good side conversation. Thank you.
Did Counselor Varga answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, now I know, now we see what's going on.
Excellent, it's in her hood for sure, in Ward Six. So are there any other questions on this one? Then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? All right, moving right along. This is eighteen-one-six-five. This is an order authorizing the payment of prior year bills. It ordered that the city council authorizes payment of a prior fiscal year bill from two thousand and eighteen related to the credit card fees for the parking garage and the parking kiosks. In June two thousand and eighteen, Bank of America Merchant Services for three thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents, and also in June of two thousand and eighteen, Bank of America Merchant Services for two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Do we have a motion of finance?
A motion.
Second. And the American explained why these just showed up.
These were bills that arrived in, at the end of June and were not able to be paid in time by the June, the July one fiscal year change. By July one fiscal year, so because they're being paid in another fiscal year, we have to have to-
Any questions on this one for the Counselor Skara?
Have we determined yet whether the benefit of taking credit cards outweighs the fee?
Funny you should ask that, because I'm going to be bringing forward some information about that at the next meeting, at the next city council meeting, that will involve some analysis on that. I mean, I think the benefits have been that customers like it, and, and we have far fewer issues in the garage with people who pull up to the gate and don't have any money on them and don't have quarters or don't have change. So I think, from a customer service standpoint, it's been very positive. But obviously, if you saw the editorial, is that recently, you know, credit card fees eat into, you know, the cost of things? So, but it's sort of a cost of doing business, because fewer, fewer people carry cash and want to have, use plastic. So, so, but I'll actually, relative to an order I'm going to be bringing forward, I'm going to provide some data on that. So, yeah, have a memo that'll be coming forward, I think, at the next meeting, that'll provide some info updates on that.
Counselor Quine?
So that just makes me wonder, is this for the entire year, these amounts, or is that just for the month of June?
Uh, these are, let me just, I can tell you. The, one of them, for twenty-one fifty-eight, is the June two thousand and eighteen fee, that one's the June two thousand and eighteen fee, and then the other one is for the, is also for June as well. We have different servicing for, like, the garage as well as the kiosks themselves. The kiosks in the garage are separate systems, with separate proprietary systems, so we have to use a third party to manage those transactions.
So we're paying something like fifty-three hundred dollars a month just for those fees?
That is correct. And it's based on a percentage of the transactions, so.
Do you know off the top of your head what a typical monthly cash flow is from the garage and the kiosk?
I don't have that information at the-
That would kind of put it in perspective if we were-
But as I said, I'll be providing some detailed information to you next month about-
Stay tuned at the next-
Yeah, I just didn't come prepared to talk about it tonight.
Any other questions on this one? Then all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Getting near the end on the recommendation of the mayor, this is eighteen-one-six-seven. In order to authorize using thirty-six hundred dollars from the Senior Center Gift Fund for financial aid for different programs, order that up to thirty-six hundred dollars in the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, funds from the city's Senior Center Gift Account be used to provide financial assistance to seniors to attend fee-based programs offered at the Senior Center, provided that each participant, participating senior meet financial aid guidelines established by the Senior Services Director, and that such assistance be limited to more than, to no more than one hundred and fifty dollars per person. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
So one of the things that Director Westberg has been focusing on at the senior center is trying to make programs there which is more accessible to a broader reach of seniors and particularly low-income seniors and looking at, you know, pricings for, you know, for, you know, yoga class or things like that. And so one of the ideas that she's come up with is to create this, basically a financial aid fund, which would be, be able to provide seniors who qualify and meet certain guidelines with, basically it's a, it will be a reduced price on, in this case, right now, as she rolls it out, it's, it's going to be for health and wellness programs such as the fitness center, fitness classes, cooking classes, things like that. Because she really believes that, that there's, while we try to keep our fees low, we also, because we have to pay for staff and everything, this is a way to do that. It would be, it would be invisible to the rest of the population, you know, it would be, you know, there'd be a, you know, the whole means test thing would be done confidentially and then people would have a, a card that would be redeemable like all the other members toward programs. They would just be paying a lower price for that $15 worth of value, so. So that is her initiative and so this basically is going to take some $3,600 from the gift fund and move it over and establish this financial aid fund. And she's also talked about, you know, potentially, you know, doing some, even some fundraising to try to add to that fund as well.
Questions? Counselor Dwight, did you have one?
Just actually, I'm, I think this is a great program and I, and in the director's letter to us, of course she attaching it, sort of subscribing along with the same criteria for SNAP benefits. I, and you answered my, one of my bigger concerns was the, the discretion aspect. And I'm, I, this is a kind of direction that I wanted and hope that I would see the senior center going in and I think this type of innovative programming actually reaffirms my affirmative vote for Director Westberg, so that's, I felt that need to say.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, and I support this and it's in dire need. I think definitely that the new director is in the right direction because I have talked with some of the seniors who can't afford some of the classes that they have right now. So this is opening the doors and I'm very pleased with this.
So you may or may not know the, the-
Bistro.
She just reopened the bistro and we actually hired a, a nutritionist who's also a chef and he has been really working to prepare both really healthy but also affordable meals and, and I, and, and also at a price point like it's $3 basically for seniors for a lunch and it's a really healthy nutritious lunch. And I was there today and there was people waiting outside the door to eat there. It's only two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, but, but again, trying to create an affordable meal option for seniors. And actually, members of the community can actually buy the lunches as well, only to go, you can't eat it there, but you pay a $7 rate and part of that is sort of a community rate, but part of it is to help underwrite keeping the prices low for seniors. So, so it's just another area where she's been trying to focus on health and nutrition, bring back the bistro program and also, you know, keep it affordable.
Counselor O'Donnell, you had a question?
Seems like the 150 should be 180, is that correct? I mean, the letter says that-
Yeah, the letter says 180, but the order says 150.
$3,600 for, a full year for 20 people is 180 per year.
Okay, so that must be a, must be a scribbler's error then, so in the, in the order, you mean?
In the order.
Yeah.
So you would have us change to 180?
That would be fine, if you could, please.
You can, finance can do it if it wants, it might be better.
Then do we have a-
I've moved to amend the order to 180.
Is that good with you? All right. All in favor of the 180 amendment in finance, we say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
So, are there any more questions for the mayor? Hearing none, then all in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
And our last order is 18168.
An order to authorize gift acceptance from EverSource for culvert on Park Hill Road. Whereas an existing culvert located on Park Hill Road between Autumn Drive and Whittier Street is undersized and in disrepair and whereas the culvert is located on a tributary to an ecologically important stream and is listed as a priority culvert for replacement for the state to provide restaurant aquatic species connectivity between upstream and downstream wetland areas, improve habitat to cold water fishery, fishery stream and increase flood period hydraulic conveyance and improve the condition of the culvert to minimize city required maintenance. That's a mouthful. And whereas in August 2018, the Northampton Department of Public Works received a grant for engineering design and services from the Massachusetts Department of Ecological Resources for which engineering design for the culvert replacement will be completed using the Massachusetts Stream Crossing Standards. And whereas the Northampton Department of Public Works has been offered material, labor and construction oversight services for the replacement of the Park Hill Road culvert, associated paving and relocation of a water main to accommodate the new culvert donated from EverSource Energy. And whereas Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half provides that the acceptance of gifts of tangible personal property require a vote of the city council and approval of the mayor, now therefore be ordered that the city council hereby authorizes the Northampton Department of Public Works to accept the gift from EverSource Energy of materials, labor and construction oversight services for the culvert replacement on Park Hill Road culvert, associated paving and relocation of a water main to accommodate the new culvert. We have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any questions for the mayor?
It's a dire need.
So, yeah, so this is an interesting project because we have been doing some design work on it and using some grant funds and with our engineer tie and bond and, and basically they also were doing work for EverSource and I guess EverSource was looking for a project to be able to make this donation and so we got connected, so basically they're going to pay for it all. And so, and it sort of serves two purposes because it, it's currently like a 21-inch culvert right now and it's going to be upgraded to a larger culvert and, and what's called a, it's called a, what do they call it? What's it called? Combinate? It's an open bottom design, so apparently it not only serves as a culvert, but it also allows wildlife to use the tunnel, to use as a tunnel, basically, which again is more ecologically friendly. So, so basically we're asking you to accept this basically free gift from EverSource, which is valued, you know, we estimate between $100,000 to $200,000 in terms of the cost.
Counselor Dwight?
We're not EverSource clients, so what?
It's odd, isn't it?
Yes.
It's very odd.
I mean, I would assume it's because of the proximity to the East Hampton boundary, which I believe that Southampton is an EverSource client, but-
Yes. Again, it's, it's less related to their utility work. Reading between the lines, I believe that they had done some work somewhere else and had not, and had, I think, run afoul of some, some wetlands rules or ecological rules.
This is an offset.
And so this, I believe, is a, is a, is an offset for that. So, I, again, I, in terms of the project itself, I think they were literally working with Ty and Bond to, to come up with a project like this and Ty and Bond said, well, we're working for Southampton on a culvert like this, so.
So this is like penance?
Yes, exactly.
You're right.
Penance, or you could call it an administrative consent order with a-
So the guns to their head on this one?
Non-Catholic interpretation.
All right, so the altruism is pretty much what we would expect from an energy system, but-
Yes, no, it was not a, picked up the phone out of the blue and said that. So yes, they have a need and, you know, and sometimes you see this in, you know, wetland remediation where you have to build a wetland somewhere else to remediate for something that you have to-
Well, that's, I mean, that's, that's what I found puzzling because it seems to me whatever violation that incurred probably occurred in some, one of their client communities and that-
I, I don't know the details, we're not privy to that, so.
I'm looking to give horse in the mouth.
So.
Take it back.
And, and again, I think they were, I think the requirement was they needed to do something within the watershed of the Connecticut River and this qualifies, you know, this meets that criteria, so. And again, it's a, it'll be a significant savings and an important culvert, you know.
As culverts go.
As culverts go.
Any other questions on this one? Are we good? Then all in favor of taking EverSource's money, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's- For their material labor and construction.
Yes, exactly.
They're not actually giving us money, they're going to give us the actual-
Things of value.
Aye.
Accept their money anytime.
And that's all that's on the agenda, so if you have a motion to adjourn, finance?
Second.
Second?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now the full city council is going to go through these financial orders. First is 18161, order authorizing the mayor to accept industrial park lot and allow its use for Damon Road Reconstruction. Is there a motion? Second, made in second. Any discussion on this?
Roll call.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Order is approved. 18163, an order to appropriate funds for the, for community preservation purposes.
Move to approve.
Second. Made in second. Any discussion? Fairly routine transfer. Roll call.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Order is approved. 18163, an order to appropriate funds for the, for community preservation purposes.
Move to approve.
Second. Made in second. Any discussion? Fairly routine transfer. Roll call.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
And Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Order is approved. 18164, an order to authorize a pilot agreement with CED Northampton Solar LLC.
Move to approve.
Made by Counselor LaBarge. Seconded by Counselor Klein. Any discussion? My understanding is before second reading, we're going to get information about terms. Good. Okay.
You're going to be deluged with information.
I can't win.
Good thing we got a culvert.
Any other discussion? Counselor Klein, I think, Shara, do you have something?
No, no.
Bad culvert joke.
Oh, sorry.
The culvert joke.
Oh, classic.
I want a shrubbery.
Hope you didn't get it from your coffee table book, 1,001 culvert jokes. All right, well, sounds like we're ready for your roll call.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.